Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to a county special public meeting. Today is Friday, October the seventeenth, twenty twenty five, one o'clock P M. So is there any public comment? Public comment online? Hearing none, we'll go right to discussion. Will.
Good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, Will Van Vactor, Cook County manager. We are here today to follow up a conversation we started on September twenty ninth. We had a meeting, special meeting, to discuss the core services for the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office also provided a presentation on each division and what different levels of service for those divisions might look like. At the conclusion of that meeting, the board of commissioners had some questions for staff to follow up on. So today, we're going to try to answer the questions that the board asked. I also put together some tables for each division that discussed kind of the the minimum, middle, and ideal levels of staffing. And also provides F T E counts and the personnel costs associated with those different levels of service. So with that, I think we're going to start off by trying to answer some of the questions that the commissioners had. So I'd like to ask the sheriff's office, Stephanie or Phil, to maybe respond to questions we heard the commissioners ask.
If you can help get it moving, and then you and I can, you can answer some of the detailed questions. Try, Will's doesn't work, so.
We have another mic if you need to slide down.
We work well together.
Okay.
I know, it's shocking, right? So the questions that I recall, Brian, you had to ask about incidents that involved involving Oregon State Police on our highways. And then some courtroom security type of questions. And under sheriff did some digging on those and found what?
So times that we've responded to things on the state highway was six hundred and eighty-five times from January one until October tenth. And out of those six hundred and eighty-five times that we've responded to something on the highway, fifty-three of those were crashes that we handled on the highway.
So of that six hundred and eighty-five, a lot of those can just be guys pulling traffic stops, right? So it's self-initiated. It's not things that would that, you know, we, we we were the ones that, you know, made it happen. So it wasn't for that. Oregon State Police wasn't there. Now, obviously, maybe if they were, they would have found the traffic stop, but it's kind of tomato to my.
And so then, and then courthouse security. Times that we've required required an additional deputy for courthouse security has been two hundred and ninety-seven times from January one to October tenth. And that does not include when the sheriff or I or Drew are doing things because we don't always put in a cap for it. And it also doesn't encompass like the, we had a a high-profile trial here a handful of weeks ago. I'm sure everybody's still very fresh and aware of it. But that took five deputies two days in the courtroom. And that's not reflected in this because we didn't have a cap for it. That would be, Drew just put everything together and made it happen.
Thank you.
With that, we we did use all of our people. In the past, we have used troopers and federal police and different agencies to help us with that courtroom security. But this time it was all us.
Yeah, this time was all us. Like on the Myers trial, the stabbing trial, we had P D, O S P, and us because we didn't have enough staff in the courtroom.
And then Seth, you had some questions around kind of the state's intentions with the parole probation budget. And I don't know that we've come up with anything other than.
I guess what a long-term intention, it's it's hard to tell. Because the way the the budgeted works, it's based on what numbers are going to be in the next two years. So it may be more, it may be less. It's it's really hard to predict that because it depends how many people are on supervision next September, October, and November. They pull snapshots of those periods. The most recent, what has caused major impacts to the budget most recently has been policy changes when there was decriminalization of small amounts of drugs that had a major impact on the number of people we were supervising. We are seeing that increase again now with re-criminalization. So it it's really uncertain on what is going to happen in the future.
I I was I was more interested in figuring out if you had any idea if they were sort of paying less per person, you know what I mean? Try and divert that those dollars to another department in the state. And if it's just a fluctuation of amount of people's arrested, and then that percentage goes up and down, I mean, I think that there's not much you can do about that. I was more talking like, do you hear that they're going to start trying to put, you know, as percentage of those dollars into housing or homelessness or some, you know, some other avenue?
I I have not heard anything about them putting those dollars towards the others.
And then I didn't get anything specific from Commissioner Herrick that I can answer other than she has concerns, but he does.
She had to leave town.
Yeah.
Hurry today, so that's why she isn't here. Family. So you know that she's not deserted.
Just up and I would never feel that way.
It's very much an excused absence. She wanted to be there.
All right, we'll step back. And so there's other questions. Yeah.
Yeah, unless the commissioners have any any follow-up questions to the information that was just provided?
No, and I appreciate those statistics. You know, this morning I was on a call with the O J D and the court system and the process that we went through to build the Justice Center, they have a committee. You know, and it was surprising because there was a, there were a lot of different counties on there, and and they all have the same problem we have. They don't have any money. Goose County shutting half their jail down, and they're losing their patrol. You know, I mean, this was a whole area problem. It's just not us. But and and it was strange because they, you know, the state, you know, I I look at these programs like the the court security that we have to do, and it's, you know, mandated in the statutes as most things are and 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 the state was going to come up with a program to, you know, to help do a test, see if they could, you know, participate in that somehow. But the legislature voted it down because they, you know, their attitude is that that in the statutes, it says that the county is supposed to take care of all of it. Well, they keep having more more problems and and we have less, less money, and they keep putting it on to the counties. And so, you know, there's a lot of talk about it. Maybe something will come around again, you know, the next time and and but I think all of these types of things are important information to have. So so we can go to fight for some of it. You know, I mean, there are, there are some that feel like should be the state that takes care of the whole darn thing. Why are the counties responsible for the state enforcement, state laws or state laws? So they need to run the whole system from the court and all. But you know, it's it's interesting. And so I I do appreciate that information. And I would be great if that's something that we can keep put into your pick table there just to keep updating that all the time. So we have those statistics and so we know what they are and.
Yeah, and I would try and put down more often than if you and the sheriff do this as well, just to make sure we get a realistic number. Yeah. Okay.
Maybe another metric, if you're not pulling a card or whatever you called it.
Yeah, pull the cat.
Cat, yeah. If you're not pulling a cat, just maybe make a notation, you know, you did this many this week or this many this month or whatever, just so we can so we can show that to the state. Potentially get some snow.
Yeah. Okay.
And it's nice to know how much we cover for the state. I mean, there's state highways. There's certain obligation that, you know, even though they're the state highways, they should, they should take care of them. I know it's all on your scope, but still, but that is, you know, you, when you, when you keep taking care of everybody else, the first thing they go and take care of themselves. And that's what a lot happens with the state. And as you can tell, I'm not really up on the state right now, but I'll leave it at that.
All right, well, there are no more questions for the for the sheriff's office. I can walk through these next few slides pretty quick. Most of the slides are just kind of a copy and paste of what was in the in the memo that part of the packet for today's meeting, but he's kind of wanting to walk through what's in those tables. Make sure you guys don't have any questions about how the information's being presented or if there's any additional information. Right? Happy to do that. So you know, you don't like going to the next slide. So this first table is for the patrol division. And in each of the tables, follows a similar format. So in that second row, what patrol will do for services at each level. So these are really, really just the same descriptions that the sheriff's office provided at the first special meeting on the core services, just put into a table form so we can see them side by side in terms of that kind of narrative description of what what those services are at each level. Obviously, there's the ideal level, the current current critical, middle ground, and then the state statutory, not far right call. Third row down, that's the just the F T E count at each each level. As you see, what's noted noticed or notable in regards to the patrol division is the state statutory minimum, that would be one F T E. And as Commissioner Barney kind of mentioned a minute ago, we've heard other stories of of counties kind of throughout the state having to go to those levels. Obviously, that's something we're trying to avoid here in Cook County. So and then that final row is the anticipated or estimated personnel cost for those different levels of service. So not surprisingly, as you go from ideal to minimum, personnel costs associated with those different levels of service goes down. And I'm having to walk through kind of the narrative of what each level of service is. But again, that's just, it's a restatement of of what was presented by the sheriff's office at the prior meeting. I'm just trying to kind of present it in a different way to kind of help see it side by side.
Yeah, I think they did a really good job explaining.
Yeah, and I like the format where you could look at it, compare one way or the other, and see the differences. But you're getting the money.
So if we go to the next slide, I believe that's the jail division. Same format. We did, we did have an extra column here because when it was presented, we had the the current current level, which is a little bit different than that middle, middle level. Other divisions kind of lined up more, but with that middle ground. But again, you can see the variation between total personnel to a personnel cost. This slide I wanted to spend a little more time on, I think it's two slides. The next slide is parole parole and probation. They format same information in terms of F T E and personnel cost. But the the next slide is the administrative division. And we didn't, we didn't really dive into this during our our special meeting, but I did want to take advantage of the to highlight this and stuff. Sorry, I'm on the spot. Do you want me to just kind of run through this? It's supposed to be something to spend spend time on at the first meeting? Or do you want to say anything?
No, I think that once you days absorb it, it really is pretty ideally, you know, we need more bodies because if you have more bodies that we're supporting, we have, you know, more caseload have higher traffic volume, things like that. And currently, we are really at our our minimums. We haven't grown in the support division. So but everybody around us and all of the activities have grown. Plus, we have two lobbies now that we have to try and support with the same amount of people. So that's becoming a stressor on the jail, trying to do best we can. And then minimum would literally be this statutory minimum type of activity that we have to provide is that sheriff's office records.
Except, just a couple of points of clarification. So as far as the F T E numbers, those those include the sheriff and the under sheriff emergency management and a couple other other positions that don't fit neatly into the other other divisions. But I I wanted to make sure we had this because there are a few positions, at least I felt like maybe didn't fall neatly into the other divisions we discussed at the first meeting. So I wanted to make sure we had some explanation of what those other other positions are. So they they were all kind of grouped into the administrative division. And yeah, happy to dive into any any questions you have or disappoint. I know, but nice initial.
Yeah.
Complete the picture.
Everybody's counting for now. And now in the jail division, we're kind of operating between current and critical. We're just kind of back and forth. Then you want F T E seven.
You know, and we have, we have patrol that's covering in the jail currently. Yeah.
Which is not ideal.
So one thing I mentioned at the at the prior special meeting is that you know, as as we face those same economic kind of headwinds that other counties and states are facing, and they're making making tough decisions. We aren't, we aren't beholden to saying we're going to, we're going to, all we can do is is fund the sheriff's office at the minimum. We can, we can play around with the different divisions. We can obviously we can, we can go hybrid on some of these ideal current, middle, and minimum. There, there's options we can play around with. So we're, what we're trying to do, you know, with this conversation is make sure we all kind of have a same understanding in terms of what these different levels of service are, what the costs are associated with those different levels of service. Crystal Hughes, who's been been helping us with this project, has put together a little tool in Excel. If you guys want to kind of dive into the numbers a little bit in terms of what those different levels look like and kind of play around with, you know, if we win ideal at one for one and current for three, we can kind of see what those numbers look like. Thank you, Brian. I should point it up on the screen. So if that's something you guys want to kind of explore here this afternoon, we're happy to to do that, kind of talk through what those differences might look like. But also also happy to answer any additional questions you have.
Yeah, we could do that kind of on a high level just to understand the formula that you use because this may be a little bit to match and things.
Thank you. So first, before we get started. Before we get started, I recognize that these conversations pertain to people's very real jobs, right? And so whenever we have these conversations, it's really hard to say, okay, well, I'm in that division or that department or that whatever. And all of a sudden, we're talking about me. And so the intent of this, while I wholly respect and understand that that is totally what happens when we start talking about the things that are important to us, this is truly just a tool. It isn't meant to say you have to be at this level or you're where the county's only funding things at this level for next year. That wasn't the purpose of this, and it's definitely so. I'm going on record to say that wasn't the intent, and that's not the direction that I was given by your finance director or your county administrator. It it's just a tool. Okay?
Yep.
Um, so, you know, explain, I'm going to go from the bottom to the top because this, if you say this ideal budget amount, um, that's a number I put in there. Okay? So we can change that number to ten million. If I did it right, I'm going to add another zero because you have to have one. Okay, there we are. So we can have an ideal budget amount of ten million dollars. Whereas we have a ten million, sixty thousand dollar budget for the current fiscal year. Okay? And you can see that if if I change this number, it shows whether you're over or under budget based on these things. It might be counterintuitive, but green means good at this point, even if the, if there's a parentheses. That means you're under what we're saying is the budget. Okay? So for fun, because we're not talking about people's jobs right now, where I'm only, it's only a tool. See, I can even have a ninety-five million dollar budget. It's no problem. Right? Aren't y'all glad? Okay. So here we're back to our nine point five million dollars because I need let's just say we need some room here to see what our differences are. And so I'll go to the top now because I like to go from the bottom to the top and then back. So we have our admin division. And I can select this tool, and it says current, ideal, critical, or minimum. So if we go to the current, we have this is our current F T E count as well as the cost associated with those folks that is pulled directly from the table provided by the finance director that has our budgeted F T Es and our current F T Es and their salaries. Okay, so that's where I'm pulling the numbers from. Additionally, there's other information here if if you want it. We have I'll, I'll go through this tab. Here we have our admin folks. We have our jail and their job titles, I guess. And then you can see court security. Well, that's mandated by the state. So their statutory minimum, right, as well as what we have to have critically, and then ideal, right? There's no change there. So you can kind of see that even no matter what I put in that cell on the next tab, it's all going to show the same. Um, except for, sorry, except for ideal, of course, because we would love to have more court security. Um, so the same idea for patrol, this is by number, like, see, the number of deputies here at our current level versus our ideal level versus our critical level. And then, as we discussed with another county, if you have one patrol person, how does that look? Okay, so that's kind of how this table is built. So not to get that might be too many numbers at this point, so we're going to shake it off. Here we are in the admin division, and we discussed that's it current. If I put that to critical, so our current is below critical. Jail, we have our current level here. My understanding is that includes the positions that we're filling right now. And our one court security folks and then patrol and then parole. Here, this other represents how much we budgeted for overtime and things like that. So in your ideal environment, you wouldn't have any overtime. So if I put all of these to current, we have an F T E cost of ten million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand with a budget of ten million, sixty thousand. So now, now that you know how the tool works, would you like me to, is there a goal that you would like to see, or would you just like to have this tool for your own use later down the road?
You just going to use? I don't, I don't have any idea.
Okay, so the way that it so the way that it would work is if you needed to have a a nine and a half million dollar budget, if you needed that to be able to make the rest of the county's budget work for next year, then you would say, okay, what happens if I move the patrol unit, for example, to fourteen F T Es as a critical? That's the idea.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, ideally, you'd like to have let your, let your scale up there. Options. Right there.
Yep. Service, ideal, critical, or statutory minimum?
Ideal, or, yeah. Idea, I mean, that would be ideally, that's what we would like.
Yep.
But
Because you, you'll have so much money.
Yeah, no, exactly.
Is there a way to, we talked about kind of a hybrid. It seems like those are all pretty set in stone in what they look like.
Yeah, so let's say that you go to critical for parole and probation. And you have patrol at ideal or even current. I haven't played with these. But you can see how that changed your toll here.
But I'm saying, what if you, could you find something between critical and current and between current and ideal? And do you see what I'm saying? Because that's, I think, what we're going to have to figure out is a way to go into the next level of finding and having a conversation of what departments we need to be a little bigger with, and maybe we can find places to cut back in other ones. And you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And I, I don't think we're going to have that conversation today, but I think that's the conversation we need to have as a county of, you know, how can we give the best service to the people and keep the deputies as protected as possible? And still be able to pay for it.
So I think to your point that the conversation really is about the county as a whole, that's accurate. This is only one portion of your budget.
I know, but I'm saying what I'm seeing here in this table is that is there ways to tweak the fields, the critical statutory, ideal, and current to other, because I think there's got to be other options.
Yes, sir. But the the caution that I wish, I guess, push back a little with is that you're it's the sheriff's job to say how he's going to spend the money, right? And where he's going to allocate that depending on his staffing levels that he wants to have. So it's, it's really the board's role, at least as I understand it and see it, that how much money is allocated for that, right? And then, yes, totally a discussion with the sheriff that says, okay, what does that do, right? Like, if you get nine million dollars or eleven million dollars, what does that do? And I think at least the conversations that I've been part of with the sheriff's office has been tell us how much money we have to spend, and then we'll figure out what to do with it.
Fair enough, yeah. But I'm, you know.
So is, so is it possible? Yes, we, yes, you can do that.
But maybe that's more of a tool for them to be able to go. That's all I'm saying is that if you just set it up like this, it feels like there's too much cuts or too much addition, and there's not, there's not a fluid way to add one here and take one away there because if you just click on current, critical or ideal, critical is obviously too far. Ideal is, right, one day, if we can get the dollars to pay for it, that's wonderful. But in some cases, the current isn't working. And and but again, I'm not saying I'm, I need to be the one to decide that, but we need to be able to be more precise in the
Yes.
In the tooling.
That's, yes, and absolutely. The finance director might have the ability to.
That's, that's, that's fine. Yeah, this is just intended kind of as a high level tool to give you an idea of what the different costs are associated with different mixes, service levels. Ideal is for all divisions or on mix. It's just a tool to kind of explore that. Just to, to again, like the whole kind of goal with diving into these levels of service is to get familiar with what they look like in terms of what services being provided. How many employees do we need for those different levels and what's the cost associated with it?
I think it's a good tool because I think this is what's the sheriff is showing how he looks at his department. Personnel, how many people is going to take to be able to buy this sort of service for each of, each of the divisions that he has? And I think also in that he's got to be mindful, which he is, is how do you raise or lower one that's going to have an effect on another one? So you get your patrol down too far because he's in a habit because of the choice, but taking patrol and beefing up the jail at different times. And so then you're going to get your patrol down in order to bring the jail. So it's, you know, there's a lot of balancing there to do and it's all up to him, his staff to figure that out. But this gives us an idea on different levels of where of the service that he's saying, this is for this amount of money, this is what I can provide. So it's just in the ballpark, but information that we can adjoin with this and the other departments in the county to kind of come up with fairly equal amount to everybody that needs money.
Yeah.
So it is a great tool. And I love Excel. But I like to see where the numbers are behind some words taken and given, so.
So right here, if you, if you want access to this spreadsheet, here is, it's literally linked to this tab. Okay?
The data center, yeah.
Yes, sir. So right here, the FTE counts and the cost is directly related to this tab. Comes right from here.
I'll buy you a copy, but I promise I won't sell it or.
Yeah, that's good. And, and to your point, yes, if you'd like more granularity, then it's not. Yeah.
I think that's great, but you have it. Thank you so much for putting that together, Chris. So again, just trying to get as much information, trying to help all of us understand different levels of service, what they look like, costs associated with those. I don't have a lot more for the board this, this afternoon. Happy to try to answer any questions that you have. The just to kind of reiterate for the folks in the room, the ultimate goal is to go through the core services conversations with all of the departments. Sheriff's Office, we, you know, is the department we kick, kick these conversations off with. I hope as we can roll through rest of the departments over the next few months and have a final package we can bring back to the board. So if you have any feedback today or in the future in terms of where the core services description is for the sheriff's office or other departments we've talked about or you'll talk about, you know, let me know. But eventually, hopefully in early 26, we'll be bringing a new package back to the board, presentation. As far as these levels of service go and core service description for the sheriff's office, happy to, happy to receive any feedback or questions for us today or in the future.
Yeah, and, and I know through your budgets, I know that, you know, it's proven to look out ahead on equipment and things, so you cycle and you get on to them, but I don't know if you've, but as I say, I, I don't know if you've thought of ways that maybe we defer some of that extra cost until years. To see if there's enough savings to keep a person or two or things like that. Because I think, you know, you always hope that next year is better. I mean, that's kind of my agricultural outlook on things. Hope the price of beef is better next year, you know, he's worth more. Not sustainable that way, but at least it gives you hope. So I, I don't know if you've looked at things like that throughout that budget to see if there's some cost savings there that we can look at.
We have. Stephanie and I were actually talking about it this morning on deferment some different things so that we can purchase equipment, you know, like say two years from now. I mean, yeah, we need it today, but maybe let's defer some stuff so that we can purchase it maybe in two years and then have something sustainable moving forward. We actually had that conversation with some equipment this morning. So, but I mean, and then I guess the other thing I would bring up would be there, I mean, some of it, there's just cost. I mean, you know, it's, it's like vehicles, for example, are very expensive. I know that they're very expensive. You know, we try not to, I mean, we try to get the most bang for our buck, but at the end of the day, these guys are still putting miles on cars and they still need to be replaced. And so trying to get somewhere to where we can have a sustainable model so that we're buying, you know, three cars a year instead of waiting until we're you know, so critical that we're spending, you know, millions. It, it, trying to do that, you know, and anticipate and be ahead of the game is absolutely what we try to do all the time, so. Sheriff's got his hand up.
Hey, John.
Good evening or good afternoon, I guess. I just wanted to say a couple of things. First, I want to apologize for not being there in person. But just the timing on this didn't work out and I couldn't make that happen, but I wanted to, I wanted to thank a couple of people. First of all, I want to thank the commissioners for taking the time to, to listen to what my command team has provided and take that into consideration. Basically, the reason we wanted to do this and, and working with Will and, and finance was to paint a picture for you. So you have an idea of what the sheriff's office does every day and on a daily and weekly and monthly yearly basis. And our mandated services that we provide, it's mandated by the state, but also not only that, but quality of life services that we provide for our citizens. And, and Commissioner Barney, you mentioned earlier about issues on state highway and OSP having to pick up their load. I agree with that, but at the same time, we have to respond to those calls because those are also our citizens on the highway that expect us to be there when they need us. And so I don't think we can eliminate that altogether because that's, that's an expectation that is asked for by our citizens. Like we did our survey there for more people, more deputies on the road, more people out of doing traffic control. And that's our mission. That's to provide the quality of service to our citizens. And do what they've asked us to do and be able to do that within our ability to, to, to pay for it, obviously. Because the county has, you know, I understand limited amount of money, so we have to make that work out for everyone's benefit. On regards to what was said earlier about the budget and you know, I realize that we're giving you this information so you can have a better picture and understand what's needed and what, what's going to what's going to be the cost to those, those needs. It's just, I want to make sure that you can understand that when, when the budget is set for the sheriff's office, we will use whatever budget that we get to the best of our ability to provide the services our citizens ask for and we'll continue to do that. And like was mentioned earlier, you know, whatever budget we get, it's the sheriff's decision on how we spend that money and where we put it as far as staffing and, and so forth in each of our divisions. So anyway, just wanted to say thanks. I'm, I'm sorry that I'm not there in person. It's not the same. I'm just trying to talk to my phone. But it's, I, I didn't want to leave meeting before letting you know my thoughts on that. So anyway, if you have any questions for me, I'm, I'm available.
John, thanks, John. You know, John, and to your point, when I, when I, when I see the state police and the court and things, I'm out here trying to find a way to make money because quite frankly, none of us in here make money. You know, we're really a liability rather than an asset. We take care of people, but we don't create any wealth to be able to pay for that. And so and the state with their mandates all the time, you're throwing things at us to do, but not giving us any money to do them. And, and that expectation continues to write to rise. And so that's basically why I'm trying to find out this information. So it gives us an opportunity and gives us some tools in the future to go through and try to get reimbursed for some of the costs that we do.
Oh, I understand that. I'm not, I'm not arguing that fact. I'm just saying that it's our citizens out there on the road. And if they get involved in a crash, we have a responsibility to respond to that. I understand, I understand your point and I, I don't disagree with that.
But having those numbers and be able to show that when we're in Salem, gives us some ability to articulate why or how they're not pulling their end of the bargain.
And I don't disagree.
And it's important that we have those because then Seth can go in there and fight like hell to get some help. Because he likes to fight.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon or evening about there. Hey, is there anything else?
Public comment.
I did. Do we have to do, I could do it. Any public comment? Or does anybody want to talk? Feel free.
I don't have anyone online.
Okay. All right. Well, motion to, to adjourn. What's made seconded, paper?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Sheriff Department.